Commissioner Lambert, you want to tee this up? I know this was done at your initiative, so you want to guide us into this conversation.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I appreciate that. And good morning to everyone who's here, everyone who's watching online. I am very excited for this joint session and this joint discussion this morning between our mayor and commissioners and our school district regarding the schools in our city. Mayor, I want to thank you, Administrator Johnson, Rebecca de La Rosa, our school superintendent, Dr. Fanoi, our chief academic officer, Glenda Sheffield, and our school board members for putting this together. As you will see, it's a lot of really great information and data, and it took a lot of people to put all this together. I'd also like to say thank you to our education advisory committee, who is always keeping our schools at the forefront of their work. As many of you know, education has a special place in my heart, specifically our public education. One of my favorite quotes by Nelson Mandela is, "Education is the most powerful weapon which we can use to change the world." And I know that here in these chambers, we're often discussing how we can make an impact and change the world for our residents, and I truly believe that education is a powerful tool in our toolbox. We have done a great job in this city of supporting Northmore Elementary School, focusing on education through our RISE initiative and the West Palm Beach Center for Arts and Technology, in addition to the Education Subcommittee on the Mayor's Task Force for Racial and Ethnic Equality. But I'm hoping today's discussion is the beginning of a collaboration and cooperation as we continue to work on improving our public schools in West Palm Beach. And while as city commissioners, we don't set education policy, I believe we do have opportunities to be good partners with the district, our local principals and teachers, to be advocates and difference makers. West Palm Beach is home to some of our county's top talent across the business, nonprofits, and cultural communities, and I'm looking forward to seeing how we might be able to work better with our school district. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, how did we want to do this? Do we want to have the speakers come up in the order, and are they going to just go to the podium?
The agenda, as it is laid out on the agenda from the school board in terms of the presentations, Mayor, is laid out here, but certainly we can leave it to the district's discretion if they need to change it up. Based on who's here at this moment, we can be very flexible and pick up the presentation from the respective members who may not be with us right now.
Is Board Member Ayala here?
No, it's okay, though. We'll work with it. Should I go?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, everyone. I'm Erica Whitfield. I'm from your school board. I just want to say a huge thank you to the West Palm Beach Commission, Mayor, Commissioners, for allowing us to speak here today. This was something that I've enjoyed doing from many cities up and down the coast in my area, and I originally was just asking Commissioner Lambert for five minutes to just kind of give a quick update on your schools. And now we have turned it into an entire workshop, which really warms my heart to know how much you guys care about education in your city. And I do think there's really nothing you can do that is more important than focusing on your schools to make a city great. So I want to say thank you so much for having us here. I want to introduce a couple of people that will be speaking with me today. We have Dr. Deborah Robinson, who is the longest-serving member on our school board at, I believe, 20 years now, and the brand-new, newest member, who I saw just walked in, Alex Alexandria Ayala. She has been on the board since November. So we have both ends of the spectrum, and I've been here for about six years, so you guys know me well. I'd also like to thank our staff who are here today. We have Dr. Glenda Sheffield, who's right there. She is our CAO, Chief Academic Officer, and then also our newly-appointed Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Adam Miller, who is right there. And he actually put together this whole presentation, so many kudos go to him, mostly for having to deal with three school board members who have a very difficult time speaking to each other because of our sunshine regulations. So thank you so much to him for the work that he's done for us today. Okay, so what we're going to talk about today, we're going to talk about our new equity, vision, and mission statements. We're going to be talking about the state of the schools in West Palm Beach. We're going to talk about enrollment, academic outcomes, construction, technology choice programs, our summer program, and our strategic plan updates. Now, let me give a caveat on a few of these things that are coming forward to you right now. The new mission and vision statements will stay the same. We are very excited about them. I'm thrilled about them. I think that we really did a great job about putting these together. But due to some of the reactions that have come from our equity statement, we will be relooking at that on Wednesday. And so I'm not sure what the outcome of that will be, so I'm going to give it to you in its current status, but know that there may be some changes coming forward. So our current mission statement, that was just approved by the board on May 5th, "The mission of the School District of Palm Beach County is to educate, affirm, and inspire each student in an equity-embedded school system." The new vision statement, "We envision: The School District of Palm Beach County is an educational and working environment where both students and staff are unimpeded by bias or discrimination. Individuals of all backgrounds and experiences are embraced, affirmed, and inspired. Each and every one will succeed and flourish. The School District of Palm Beach County will take ownership for students' academic mastery, emotional intelligence, and social-emotional needs by creating environments where students, families, staff, and communities will develop agency and voice. A joy of learning is fostered in each student, and a positive vision for their future is nurtured. Each student's cultural heritage is valued, and their physical, emotional, academic, and social needs are met. We see you." Our new equity definition, we believe that you needed to define equity before we talked about an equity statement, so we believe that equity means each student, regardless of race, ethnicity, poverty, disability, language status, undocumented status, religious affiliation, gender identity, and sexual orientation, will have access to the opportunities, resources, and support they need to imagine, nurture, and achieve their dreams. And here is our equity statement, which I mentioned on Wednesday we'll be revisiting. "The School District of Palm Beach County is committed to dismantling racism and other systems of oppression and inequity. We will create equitable and inclusive schools that ensure students have what they need to be successful in school and life. Achieving racial equity requires proactive and continuous investment in historically marginalized groups who have endured centuries of systematic oppression. The School District of Palm Beach County is committed to dismantling structures rooted in wide advantage and transforming our system by hearing and elevating underrepresented voices, sharing power, recognizing and eliminating bias, and redistributing resources to provide equitable outcomes. The School District of Palm Beach County will take ownership for students' academic mastery, emotional intelligence, and social-emotional needs by creating environments where students, families, staff, and communities will develop agency and voice. The School District of Palm Beach County acknowledges the existence of and will eliminate systems, processes, and mindsets that perpetuate race, ethnicity, poverty, disability, language status, undocumented status, religious affiliation, gender identity, and sexual orientation as predictors of achievement." The School District of Palm Beach County will achieve, embrace, celebrate, and honor our students, families, staff, and community members, and their unique cultural histories while ensuring each student achieves personal and academic success. Now, I'll pass it off to my colleague, Dr. Deborah Robinson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So the slide before you is the enrollment demographics slide. I think we're going to need to share this whole PowerPoint with you because there's a lot of data here. I would keep you here all day trying to go through it all. But this one is sorted from highest to lowest percentage of students that have returned to campus for their Monday through Friday education. The range is from 86% at South Olive to 37% at Bear Lakes Middle and Forest Hill High. As a general rule across the district, there has been a lower return to campus at high school and middle school compared to elementary, which makes sense, right? And you will also see here a range of the enrollment by race, free and reduced lunch status, which is our poverty indicator, English language learner, and exceptional student education status. So outside of the full-choice schools, all schools in West Palm Beach are 80% and above children living in poverty. This slide relates to our three full-choice schools located in West Palm Beach. These schools have no boundaries, and every student has to apply. So these schools are much more likely to have students with caring adults in their lives because those adults have to make sure that the young person applies for these choice programs eight months prior to the school year starting. So I was curious to know how many West Palm Beach students attend these schools. So you will see that from 2.3% to 3% of each age group living in West Palm Beach attends our all-choice schools. On the other hand, 73% of the students at Northborough Elementary live in West Palm Beach, and more or less 20% of the students at Bach and Dreyfus live in West Palm Beach. So moving on to the almighty data on academic performance. So these are the winter diagnostics taken in January. This is English Language Arts percent proficiency. So it's sorted by lowest proficiency rating, which we call Level 3 and above on the 1 to 5 Florida Standards Assessment exam. This is the diagnostic which will predict their score on the upcoming FSA exam. So Level 3 and above is passing for our school district and what we call proficiency. I'm really clear our goal should be Level 5, but it is what it is. So you can infer that I am not at all happy with these results. Other than Bach and Dreyfus, which are 88 and 90%, respectively, most of the "regular" West Palm Beach schools have between 21 and 46% proficiency. Turning Points Academy, which has the lowest proficiency rating on this chart, is a high school behavioral alternative education program. So you can see the correlation, some might say causation, between low English Language Arts proficiency and the behaviors that will lead to alternative education placement. This I call the school district's critical care unit, and these students definitely need our help to have a bright future. This slide is the winter diagnostic assessment, the same Level 3 and above proficiency. You will not see the high school here because Algebra and Geometry have end-of-course exams, and so students enrolled in Algebra and subsequent math courses are not included here. You will see here that for the West Palm Beach schools, there's a cluster of proficiency between the 20 and 40th percentile rating. Room for improvement.
Thank you so much, Dr. Robinson. So this is actually one of my favorite slides, and it's something that I've really wanted to make sure was included here. When people ask me how COVID, how the pandemic has impacted our students, I really refer to this. This is what I'm going to show you right here. Look down the slides where you're looking at the percentage, and you're seeing where it says second and third, those percentages going down. So what you're going to see, we're looking at all of our middle schools on this first slide, and in these middle schools, what you're going to see is that from 2020 to 2021, so really pre-pandemic to post-pandemic, how many of our students have earned at least one F letter grade in one of their classes? And you're going to see the differences that have come up pre and post-pandemic. The school that is doing the best, obviously, is Bach Middle School of the Arts, and they've only changed a couple of points. But you'll see Bear Lakes Middle, their difference in the second period was 18%. That is how many children, 18% of the children now have one F in that grading period, whereas the year before they did not. The next one down, Coniston Middle, where my daughter goes to school, they went from 15% to 29%, and they've actually gone down, they've had a change of 14%. You'll see at Jega, that number is even more astounding, at 37%, and then 30%. And then you see the grading period three, the same trend occurs. And just having a daughter that has gone through this year, I totally understand what is happening with these students. At the beginning, we were asking them to immediately go to online learning, and that was very difficult, especially for their mental health. It's been a real struggle. Also, I'll go to the next slide and show you high school. With high school students, what you're seeing a lot is that they just don't want to come. And so we have put a huge effort into asking our students to come back to the classroom because we know that when they're home, you're looking at their videos, and that you're really seeing, we'll say, you know, you have to keep your camera on so that they have some accountability, but you're showing you their ceiling fan moving in their home, or you're seeing a back wall, but their faces aren't in it. So they're not paying attention. I know students have fallen asleep during classes or just only attend the classes where they have a teacher that they really like. So they're not even pulling in a full day. So we're asking these students to come back. So with this slide, with the high school slide, please look at the same thing. So the top three schools are your traditional high schools. Traditional, I mean that they don't serve a special purpose. Dreyfus is definitely a special school. So you'll see Dreyfus is doing quite well. They've only gone down with an increase of 2% on both periods, grading period second and third, they only had a 2% loss. But Forest Hill High, 22%, 24% change. Palm Beach Lakes High, 19%, 16%, which is actually pretty good considering many of the schools around the county have really gone down a lot, and you can see the district totals up there. Indian Ridge and Turning Points are special schools in that Indian Ridge is where we send our students who are having behavioral issues, so that's a special group of them. So they've gone down from period, grading period two, 31%, 16% to the third one, and then Turning Points actually wasn't as bad as it could be. That's the school for our alternative education students, and they changed from 17% to 10%. So what I want you to take away from that slide, both of those slides, is really the impact of the pandemic on education is very real. These students are really struggling, and having them back in the building is crucially important to our success. I'll now pass it to my colleague, Alexandria Ayala.
Good morning. Great to be here with all of you, city commissioners and mayor. Thank you for having us for this important discussion. Next slide up here is our graduation rates. We are actually in the process of redoing our strategic plan for the next five years because it sunsets in 2021 after being created in 2016 and implemented. And there were four pillars, and the only one, I believe, that we actually accomplished was graduation rates. But I want to be clear about the fact that we are nowhere near where we need to be on that. Those numbers were skewed, given the allowances and the different hold harmless rules that the state legislature gave us to accomplish certain goals and continue moving students through the process. So there were some skewed numbers on graduation rates that are not really what's going on in our schools. If you look at the city of West Palm, you had Palm Beach Lakes that was the second highest in the region for the type, again, traditional public high school, and then Turning Points, which actually increased. And if you look at the one-year and five-year change columns, while we have made good progress, I want to reiterate that there have been factors that have not shown the full picture and that we still have a long way to go to keep up our 90% graduation rate as a district. So these are okay. We have a lot of work to continue to do. Next, I want to talk about some construction updates, one of my favorite things to do and one of the most necessary, I think, in terms of looking at our district through the lens of equity, as our board has committed to do, is how our schools look in terms of facilities, in terms of their exterior, in terms of their, you know, having functional AC units, not having mold, having appropriate buildings for our students to be in regardless of where they are in our county. And here in the city, we're working on a lot of construction updates that were made possible because of the referendum that voters approved, and that every single penny is being used, no pun intended. Every single cent is going towards really important upgrades. I know at Forest Hill, you have all been very involved with the parking lot, and so we're so thankful for that initiative and that partnership that was able to make that possible because it's going to be a great thing for our school there. But overall, I always look at how does, you know, are classrooms outfitted with the appropriate materials? Right now, there's a big focus on 21st Century Media Centers to make sure that we're transitioning from bookshelves and Dewey Decimal System to computers, technology printers, to what our students need today to be successful in school. So all of that work is being done, and you can see the schedule of completion here. Show you another slide as we continue that work in the schools in the city. And a lot of it is just upkeep and wear and tear as schools get older. We will be opening a few new schools that you may have heard about or read about in the news. We are redoing two schools, and, you know, it's really great to see buildings that have aged be able to serve our students as they need in this day and age. Next is our academies and choice programs, just a big, this is a big topic, and it's always important to me to highlight that there is a lot more than just one or two schools that offer incredibly fruitful and beneficial programs for our students. I was blown away to go and explore the Grassy Waters Biomedical and Vet, for example. That's an elementary school teaching students skills that could change their career, you know, their career choice for the rest of their lives, and critical, you know, education for preserving our flora, our fauna, and our planet. So that's a very cool one. At Coniston, we have our dual-language Spanish and our IB. We have so many programs, and it's always good for me to kind of highlight and show everyone that there is more than just one school that has one thing. So please use our choice programs, take advantage of them. The educators at them go above and beyond, and they are very beneficial for our young students to figure out what it is that they enjoy doing and what passions they may have. All right, the next one, I think I'm passing it back to Mrs. Whitfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ayala. Just let me make a plug really quick for those dual-language programs. I have a daughter who went to North Grade and participated in the dual-language program and then continues at Coniston currently, and it just blows my mind that somebody's actually taught her Spanish. I think this is just an amazing thing and really such a gift that we can give to our children. So thank you for bringing those up, Ms. Ayala. All right, our next slide is digital classrooms and technology. And I like to say this is the one good thing that came out of the pandemic. It's something that I've always wanted, was to make sure that there was an electronic device in the hand of every student. It's been such a struggle to do. When the pandemic happened, we had to redirect funds very quickly. Luckily, there's been additional funds provided to us, but right now, if you can look, the column that I want you to see is where it says Chromebooks and the little percentage all the way down, you can see what the percentage, ratio percentage of how many Chromebooks we have for every student that's in the school. And you'll notice that in every case, and I'm going to give you my reasoning why for Northborough in a second, in every case, we are over 100%. So there's enough for every student, and even enough for every teacher, and even enough for every person when they break one to get another one. So we have enough there. Now, the issue with Northborough is just that there's a little transition where they're e-wasting some of the computers and then bringing in new ones this week, actually. So the number's off at this moment, but it'll be back to normal in just a few days. So you can see what we've been able to do through this support of the community, really, is this funding that we have gotten, we were able to put it into the classrooms and make sure that every student has a device, which is super crucial when we don't have students attending in person right now. So now what we're going to do is, my colleagues and I are going to go through the schools that are in our districts. So I have two that are in the city of West Palm Beach officially, though they're all in my heart. So the first one, I actually am the school board member for Dreyfus, and so I'm super proud. I think it's just the most wonderful school. It has just such a great feeling when you walk in the door. If you guys haven't had a chance to visit, I highly recommend that you do. It's just a wonderful place. We just picked up a new principal there, Blake Bennett. She used to be at Wellington Landings Middle. This is her first time being a principal of a high school. She comes in with a lot of energy and enthusiasm for the work. She's very excited about this school. This school is obviously a very special place. I'm sure you all know children that have attended or do attend Dreyfus, and it's just really, it's a wonderful thing to have in the city of West Palm Beach. The things that I think are very interesting here, obviously, their graduation rate is 100%. It's pretty much always either 99 or 100%. The students there are very talented. That's one of the things that we love about them. They always have a school grade of an A. We are a little bit over capacity on our enrollment, which is a good thing. It means that they made a point to let as many children in as they can, and I think that's a wonderful thing. Obviously, the buildings are old, but we're using them to the best of their ability. The facility renewals that Ms. Ayala was speaking about, we will be having scheduled for construction beginning in early 2022, so you should start seeing some changes there, which is really exciting. I had an opportunity to speak to Ms. Bennett and asked her what things could the city of West Palm Beach help with. And she said that, oh, actually, I wanted to mention one thing really quickly. Looking up at the numbers, you'll notice that many more children came back to school. This school had a really, really low in-person attendance rate, high, high levels of distance learning. We're actually starting to see some of those kids get back in, so you can see that distance learning versus on-campus numbers have gotten a lot better. So one of the things she would like to ask is if you would consider beautifying Tamarind on the side of the school. It's one of the, you know, not greatest-looking parts of the school. She said, you know, some trees and things like that would be wonderful. And then trees on the south side of Fern, near the entrance, really need to be cut back. So she's just, surrounding the school, just a little bit more care and attention would be wonderful, and that was her only request. They're doing quite well, other than that. So South Olive Elementary School, right by my house, I can walk to it. It's a very nice, beautiful school to have there. Let's talk a little bit about what's going on there. So this is an elementary school. You can see they have quite a large on-campus population right now. Many, many students are coming. Their enrollment is very low, so many children, it's actually been on our choice open enrollment for many years now. So that means that after all of the choice programs have been decided, if someone is interested in attending that school, and it is a fabulous school, they can just apply in that second round of choices. So there's actually openings there. So if you have families that are in other areas and would like to attend South Olive, they can. They have facility renewal that will be, it's ongoing right now, and completion is on schedule for August of 2022. They have a mediumly high free and reduced lunch, 63%, that does not make them a Title I school, though. It's a little bit low for that, so they don't get those funds. So keep that in mind when you're thinking about, you know, supporting that school, that they are not getting those Title I dollars that other schools might get, even though they do still have a high free and reduced lunch percentage. So the issue that Ms. Springman brought up to me that she would like to share with you is that she's having issues on Dixie Highway. When parents are entering the car loop, they're coming south on Dixie and trying to make a left into that building, into that area. Apparently, the city actually did put up a sign that said, "No left turns," but it's very small, and she says, "Not noticeable," and there's been many almost accidents that have been happening there, so she is very concerned about that. And she asks that the city review the intersection and have a safety study done to see if there's anything better that could be done to help make sure those families get into our school safely. So just a very small comment from Ms. Springman. And now I will pass it off to Ms. Ayala.
Thank you. Okay, Belvedere Elementary. I was just there two weeks ago, and I actually already initiated looking into something the principal, Ms. Lopez, asked about, which is directly, would need the help of the city. It has to do with Lake Road on the back end of the school. There's a crosswalk where families and students cross over to the other side. Right now, it's not aligned with where the light is on the road. So they want to know if instead of having two areas where folks are crossing the street, they could be consolidated into one. So I already spoke with some commissioners about that, but I just wanted to say that here. This is a great community school. It is majority Hispanic, and they do have really robust ELL programming to assist with that and make sure that families can access the resources they need for success. They are scheduled for design in a facility renewal to begin in fiscal year '23, and a lot of these families that attend Belvedere will be eligible for assistance with Digital Inclusion Initiative that we are working on with many municipal and county partners to complete that. Going to Coniston Middle, this was, they just completed at the beginning of the year a facility renewal. This is an incredible middle school. I know that Mrs. Whitfield's daughter attends, but I'm also really partial to it because the band director there is a friend of mine from college, and I think so highly of the Principal Oscar Otero, who is a real leader and who is actually serving on our steering committee for our strategic planning development, and has been selected to lead all middle schools in the county. So if you see him or know him, give him that props. But they do a lot of great work here, and again, this is one that will, it has always been committed to world languages and expansion of that education through the IB program, through the Spanish Dual Language Program, and through very deep community ties to assist the community in accessing the help that their students and children may need. Forest Hill High, this is such an amazing school. The principal, Esther Rivera, is recent. She's just, she's only been there a couple of years, but she has come in with fire and passion, ready to lead these students. They have many choice programs and offer their students a wide variety of options for their future. The last three schools I showed you are not where they want to be grade-wise, but it has been a very hard year, so they're going to be doing a lot of rebuilding and analyzing how programming can be better presented to get the number to match the effort that's going on in the school. I don't like to judge students, you know, and students are not C students just because of a grade placed on them by a system. They do, they can achieve, they want to achieve, and all the work is being done by their principals to accomplish that. As a district and as a board, we just have to make sure we're providing every support needed to get them up to where they want to go. High school, Forest Hill, is an incredible community beacon that's been there forever. You probably know a lot of folks who graduated from there, and getting that school up to a higher academic achieving goal is a goal of mine, so we're all working really hard on that. I believe this is for Mrs. Whitfield? goal is, is a goal of mine. So we're all working really hard on that. I believe this is for Mrs. Whitfield.
I just insisted that we put a slide in here to thank you all for your recent approval of additional parking spots for Forest Hill High School. This has been something that I've been really passionate about for a long time and I know the families are going to be thrilled about it. So thank you so much.
Yes, we are all in agreement there. Looking at Grassseed Waters, um, this is such an amazing elementary school. The students there are so interested in learning and achieving and they're very bright. The leadership there is very focused on ensuring that all students, every student has access to what they need to get through elementary school successfully and be on their way on. So I, I visited there, um, a couple of months ago and met with the principal to see any supports we could give. They, you know, they're doing okay. And if I ever hear of anything, I'll always know where to find you all to make sure that we can support them however they need. Indian Ridge School, this is again, one of our, uh, alternative schools for, uh, behavioral health. This is, um, a, a different, you know, this is where they're at. Their, their demographics can be seen at the top. Um, and it's, you know, if you take a look at the percentage of race and ethnicity at the different schools, again, I think that data will say something to you. So I implore you to look at the percentage of Black, Hispanic, white, and different, um, students that attend each school based on their grade and their, um, achievements. I think it says a lot to the work that as a district needs to be done to ensure that every single student is actually able to succeed and is supported through that. Um, it, that's what stands out to me when we look at the data. Here's Palmetto Elementary, a feeder for, uh, Coniston, for Forest Hill High. This school is right now at a C as well. They do have an IB program, which is, uh, successful. I've been in communications with the principal about possibly putting in dual language, but we decided, the district decided to do it at a nearby elementary school to act as a feeder program and pattern for Coniston Middle to make sure that students can have that dual language selection throughout their continuum of schooling in elementary, middle and high, which is so important for retention. I'm always looking at how we can fill those gaps and make sure students have that ability. This school is eighty percent Hispanic. Um, and it's changed a lot over the last, uh, five to ten years in diversity. It used to be more, you know, Cuban and Cuban Americans. Now it's a lot of Central American, Southern American, which just, it, it ties in with the Guatemala and Maya Center and the work they're doing to make sure that all of our families can access what they need and communicate. And Turning Points Academy, which again is our alternative education school, which is out in West West Palm. This is, um, the capacity they're at right now. Uh, if you look at the graduation rate, you know, it's not always when students, um, have to end up at an alternative school, um, providing additional supports for them to continue to want to succeed and move through that process is something that still needs to be looked at because the graduation rate is not where we want it to be. And I think this is for Dr. Robinson. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I'm going to present the elem, the schools in District Seven, starting with the elementary schools and going in alphabetical order. So first you will see the school that you know, Northmore Elementary School, home of the Panthers, where Vonda Daniels is the principal. Northmore has a longstanding partnership with the city of West Palm Beach and several others, including North End Rise and Bridges. The academic program is STEAM, uh, Science, Technology, Engineering Arts and Math, and STEM, STEAM without arts, right? And with project-based learning. I asked each of my principals, um, specifically to create slides that reflect the school's, um, spirit. And that's why you don't see the, the, the framework, um, slides there. I also asked them specifically what they needed, so you're going to hear it. Uh, Northmore asked specifically for, uh, additional academic tutors um, and other academic supports. So I particularly love academic tutors. These are people, generally young people with some college, preferably from the school's community that act as a support to the teacher. With training, they can do some small group instruction and other academic supports. The additional advantage is that this is a way to lure young people into teaching. They get to see if they like it. We get to see if they have the skill set that is needed to be an outstanding teacher. Our HR department can work with them in completing their bachelor's degree and they can come right back and, um, become a full-time, hopefully long-term teacher in the school that prepared them. The next is Northborough Elementary, which is an all-choice Montezori pre-K to five school. In addition, they have gifted education at every level and an accelerated math program. Uh, Shandra Kenlaw is a brand spanking new principal, but you would never know it. She has a depth of knowledge and confidence that only comes with years of experienced coaching of others to become better educators. Northborough, as you see, has a, uh, robust after-school program and a number of partnerships. The ask, she sent pictures. She wants you to know that she's concerned about the historic building on campus. It is not usable and continues to deteriorate. It houses raccoons, rats, foxes, and at times two-legged uninvited guests. She asked that you assist with school zone signage, especially on Spruce, where the signage has faded. And she really requested with a sense of urgency that we revisit, um, the two-way trafficking on four, uh, Fortieth Street that is, is scheduled to take place, um, in June. Uh, this will have a negative impact on the parent pickup and the bus traffic. She invites us to come see for ourselves at two o'clock in the afternoon. And so in summary, the Northborough requested for help with the historic building, the zone, uh, school zone signage on Spruce and to revisit the decision-making fourth, on Fortieth Street, a two-way. Pleasant City Elementary School, where Valerie Jones inspires students and staff and will tell you in a heartbeat, it is the most pleasant place on earth. Now note that Ms. Jones also included mobility and overage students when I asked her for her demographics. Pleasant City has a pre-K program as well as traditional academic program. There's limited bells and whistles via the choice program, but there's good, solid instruction. There's a hearty after-school program that includes art club, chess club, literacy club, and health and wellness club. And they're supported by several business and community partners. They're asked, school supplies, uniforms, incentives for teachers and students, and mentors. Roosevelt Elementary School, this is where my parent advocacy began. So Mrs. Sharonda Aline has been the principal there for seven years after serving as assistant principal. Roosevelt is one of our many magnets programs that don't get additional magnet dollars. They have a STEM program and is, and many of the schools you'll see have a twenty-one, twenty-first century grant-funded after-school program. They have several community partnerships, including the West Palm Beach Rotary Club. Ms. Aline's first ask is for funds for equipment, supplies and personnel to fully implement the STEM program. She also asked for sponsorships for field trips, student and staff incentives, and a few other items. UB Kinsey Palm View Elementary School of the Arts, where Adrian Howard has served as principal for thirteen years. You know UBK has special programming and communication, the performing arts and the visual arts. There are several partnerships, including the Kravis Center. And Mrs. Howard's ask is for assistance with field trips, mentoring, parent training, and volunteers to read in small groups with students during the school day. Westward Elementary International Baccalaureate School, where Bobby E. Brooks Jr. has served as principal for nine years. Westward is an international baccalaureate primary years program designed to prepare students for the rigors of the international baccalaureate middle years and diploma programs. Westward's ask, um, is for continued academic support as well as funding to pay for small group instruction with their struggling K-two students. And you will know a number of business and community partnerships with Westward Elementary School. BAC. BAC Middle School of the Arts, located at the site of the old North Shore High School. BAC is a full-choice arts school with programming and communications, band, dance, piano, strings, theater, visual arts and vocal, and Sally Rosansky serves as the principal. She simply asked that the city supports the arts. Bear Lakes Middle School, led by Dr. Kirk Howell for the past ten years. Bear Lakes exemplifies why I mentioned how long someone has been a principal. Bear Lakes is a hidden gem. They have coding, cybersecurity, health professions, all in-house. They are providing in-demand programming for their students that attend their school via boundaries, not just designing programs to attract other students. So they're educating the students that they have. Mr. Howell is also working to accelerate children with the possibility of taking college courses the summer after eighth grade. That is impressive. Roosevelt Community Middle School, led by the gentleman that I refer to as a superhero, Jeremiah Stewart. He asked for your assist to access more resources to support student achievement. He and I appreciate the morning and afternoon traffic support on Australian and asked that it continue. You will see that Roosevelt Middle School has a STEM, has STEM-related choice programs. They also have inbounded students. Their programming includes pre-med, biomed, environmental science, technology, pre-engineering and leadership. And they have diversity in their after-school clubs and are supported by several community-based organizations. Last but not least, Palm Beach Lakes Community High School, lovingly referred to as Lakes. It's been led by Dave Alfazel for the past five years. Mr. Alfazel just finished his term as leader of the high school principals for the Palm Beach County School District. Morning announcements at Palm Beach Lakes include a closing that is protect this house and the students do. Mr. Alfazel notes that eighty-one percent of his incoming students traditionally have performed previously at Level One and Level Two, but he has an eighty-three percent graduation rate. So there's good work being done at Lakes. Lakes has several specialty programs, including the Law Academy, Medical Academy, Biotech Academy, Marine Corps ROTC, Early Childhood Teaching Academy, and my current favorite, the Fire Academy. So we want to thank the city of West Palm Beach for your support of the Fire Academy, which has been robust. Uh, we will have fire people who are ready for you to hire in just a couple of years. Lakes has numerous community partnerships and a robust framework for extracurricular activities. Additional ask for internships for the students, to develop a rigorous partnership with the Mandel Public Library, continuing the West Palm Beach Cops and Scholars Program, and to continue or even increase the communication between the West Palm Beach PD and school police. And they want you to remember their motto, lakes on top. Thank you.
We're in the homestretch. Don't worry, we're getting there. Um, let me talk about one of my favorite passion areas, um, that I just, I, I spend a lot of time working on is about, um, hunger in the community and how we feed our children. I have been serving for the past five years as the Chair of the Childhood Task Force for the United Ways Hunger Relief Plan. Um, it's a pleasure to be a part of that group because I am able to work to understand about how food is delivered to the community and how we make sure our children get fed. Um, I'm not telling you anything that I'm sure you guys don't know. I know you've spent a lot of time working on, um, dealing with these types of issues within your community, but, um, just to share with you, um, Palm Beach County, the median income for Palm Beach County is thirty-nine thousand, but West Palm Beach's median income is fifty-four thousand. So you have on average higher incomes here in West Palm Beach. However, you have more people living below poverty and more people, more children living below poverty. You'll see the twenty-eight percent of the children are living below the poverty line here in West Palm Beach. Um, this is really high number. It's very, very challenging. And one of the things that we do at the school district is we make sure, um, to feed them when they're at school. One of the privileges that we have from the new federal administration um, is that they're going to be extending our, um, ability to continue to feed children for free at schools next year. So right now they're able to get free breakfast and free lunch. We've been doing free breakfast for years in Palm Beach County, but free lunch is a big deal. Um, so that there's nearly no stigma associated with it. You come to school, you get a, you get a lunch, you get a breakfast. We'll be continuing that next year, which is just a wonderful thing. Um, and I'm hoping we can continue it on beyond that. We also provide supper programs to our schools, after-school snacks. And through this year, we've actually been providing weekend backpacks. Send home food with these students on the weekends so that they can eat. Um, we have also partners within the community who provide, uh, backpacks for our students, um, going home on the weekends. It's wildly important that a student eat over the weekend. Otherwise they come in Monday morning and they can't focus, they can't learn. So this is something that we really need to make sure continues. Within, um, West Palm Beach, you have two places that get backpacks. Um, both supplied by the Palm Beach County Food Bank, Forest Hill High School and Grassseed Waters, oh, I'm sorry, Forest Hill High School and Grassseed Waters have a pantry. And Northborough and Northmore get, um, from Blessings in a Backpack, backpacks that go home. This, uh, like, just a couple of weeks ago, we just got a word that there's been a huge donation to the Palm Beach County Food Bank, one point six million dollars. That was given just to support backpack programs within the, this, the county. So I believe that we are going to be able to give everyone a backpack, um, through the food bank and our additional partners, who we're not getting rid of the other partners, but just through all the partners, we should be able to do weekend backpack programs through, in all of the schools for all the children that need them, uh, for this next year and hopefully the year after. Let me just say one more thing about this pandemic and how it's really hurt people with hunger issues. Um, currently we have, uh, two-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand people in Palm Beach County who struggle with hunger. Seventy thousand of those residents are children. This is the whole county and the increase has been thirty-five percent since twenty eighteen. So you see that the increase has really been impacted by this pandemic. The school district this past year gave out twenty-two million meals since July. Uh, seems like a lot, but, uh, normally we give out around thirty-three million meals. And so it's been just everything that they can do to try to give out as many meals as they can because many students haven't been in the building. So having children back in has this extra, in addition to their academics being supported, their health will also be supported, making sure that they're getting to eat, uh, breakfast, lunch and dinner during the week and then hopefully those weekend programs. In addition, we do have grab and go boxes that we're sending home, um, at eighty-eight sites right now on Thursdays. When we send them home, they get seven days' worth of meals, um, so that hopefully help them, uh, get through, uh, that time. So for students that aren't there, um, we can make sure that that happens. Um, and I think that's all I'm going to talk about today, but I want to introduce to you a new face. So we're going to have Dr. Glenda Sheffield, um, our chief academic officer is going to come up to talk about this, the, uh, purpose of the student academic support plan. Thank you, Dr. Sheffield.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
It's definitely great being here this morning just to, um, you know, continue to talk about the work within the school district and of course, how important it is that we continue to just work together as a community because it indeed takes the entire village. And we surely appreciate the support of all of our municipalities. Um, as we talked this morning around the student academic support plan, and this is, um, the student academic, academic support plan is actually, um, the plan in which we're putting together to help mitigate many of the instructional losses that our students have encountered within the past fourteen to sixteen months. I tell you back on March thirteenth, um, twenty nineteen, when we left, we thought it was for two weeks, that two weeks have turned into over a year. And how we had to turn on this switch of distance learning within a two-weeks time period. What we do know is that no learning can replace being in the traditional schoolhouse. And not to expect those students, um, of course, many of them to experience such, um, tremendous instructional loss. But surely as a district, you know, our wonderful teachers, our principals have worked tirelessly in terms of trying to listen, you know, lessen the loss in many of those areas, but we know that it exists. We also know that, um, in mitigating and trying to work on these instructional laws, the work that we're going to do this summer, and you're going to hear about the work, we'll be fooling ourselves if we think that this summer alone is going to close the gaps, the instructional gaps that our students have experienced. So phase one of our student academic, academic support plan is about the programs in which you're going to hear that we're going to be involved in this summer. Then I'm actually, I'm working right now with our current Deputy Superintendent, Chief of School, Keith Oswald, to where we are working very tirelessly on what phase two looks like for a three-year stretch. So you will hear more about that in, you know, in the upcoming months. But for this intended purpose this morning, the work that we're going to be doing this summer, um, we have various programs that will be going on. I will tell you just about all of our schools are going to be open. Um, it's our elementary programs, we have them all at cluster sites. But particularly here- But particularly here, I'll just take you through and give you a quick snapshot for the essence of time. Our programs are going to run June twenty-eighth through July to twenty-second. The first program that we have here is our VPK program, which will be for our four-year-old students. Those families that did not use their pre-K vouchers during the academic year will have an opportunity to use those vouchers during the summer if they did not use it, have not used it already. They're at now, our site that we have identified is at Village Academy. As we see our numbers for enrollment require such additional sites, then, of course, the team will be ready to do so. But right now, we have identified Village Academy in Delray Beach. As we look at our elementary, we have, this is a brand-new program that we're going to be doing. This program for elementary, the first one, is our rising first, second, and third graders. Our rising, when I say rising first, second, and third graders, meaning that these are students that are our current kindergarten students that are becoming up to first, then our first-grade students coming up to second, and then second coming up to third. These particular students have been identified. We've utilized a matrix in-house and with the formative and summative assessments that our students have been involved in during the year because we do utilize our assessments, not punitive, but to assist in forming teaching and learning and making certain that we can meet our students where they are. So we have a good handle in regard to those students that have those tremendous losses still. Those students have been identified. We have sent notifications out to the families. And we had asked our families to let us know by May thirteenth. And we extended that deadline to this past Friday with the anticipation, will they child be attending? And our elementary programs, all of our elementary programs are going to be running like a regular, normal school day from, pretty much, elementary is from eight-thirty to two-thirty. And I know we say that that is a long time. And in trying, I have to say to you that it's not going to be that skill and drill, that literacy and math, we will have a focus on it. But I need our parents in the community to understand that we're also going to be very intentional, making certain that this work is around project-based learning. We're going to be bringing in the STEM, the STEAM, you know, the PE, the art, and most importantly, that social and emotional learning. That's very important. And all of the instructions that I'm going to be talking, these programs that I'm going to be sharing with you, it's going to be face-to-face. We are saying that these are our most vulnerable students. They have been identified for a purpose. So, and we knowing that our teachers are needing to have some really small groups and one-on-one time and really trying to hit the mark, so we really need to do that face-to-face. Our students, all our students that are identified for all these programs that you're going to hear about will be provided transportation. They will also have an opportunity for breakfast and lunch. So, you know, we're trying to just meet them and do our very best in just being as accommodating as necessary. So that's the first one. And then the same will go for the second program here for our elementary, which is our expanded Summer Reading Academy. Now, the Summer Reading Academy, this is a program that we've had every year and was required by the state for those third-grade students that may have taken their state assessment and did not meet the quadrant score to be promoted to Grade Fourth. Well, we did not wait on the state to say whether or not state assessments were going to be counted towards promotion and retention because that was irrelevant for us. Because we know that, at the end of the day, it's about teaching and learning, and we know what our students have encountered. So we went ahead and we planned for this prior to that executive order coming out, meaning that there are other benchmarks that could be utilized to determine if a student is promoted, particularly, you know, our third-grade students promoted to fourth grade, et cetera. And then the same thing with our senior high school students. So we've separated our third-grade students from that first program that I talked about to where this particular program, the expanded SRA, is strictly for our third-grade students that are currently in third grade but have participated in all of our assessments, particularly the winter and fall diagnostics. But their benchmark, their threshold have very concerned, they're very concerning for us. So we want to, we're utilizing the same curriculum that we would have used if the state had said that this was necessary. And then we will go on to middle school. And then when you go down to middle school, I'm really excited about this particular program for middle school. This particular, the first one, Preparing for Success, our rising sixth-grade students. These are our current fifth graders that are in elementary. These students are going to have an opportunity to come onto their middle school campus that they will be starting in the fall as sixth graders. And we will, again, with the focus around literacy and math, but at the same time, doing that onboarding and doing those critical thinking skills to help them get acclimated there with the middle school campuses and showing them the difference. So I'm very excited about it. And then the second program is a program that we've had in previous years. It's our middle school course recovery. This particular program's for our students that may have had some bumps and bruises and may be behind with quality points and need to make up some credits, some quality points, to be promoted to the next grade level. This particular program, we've been doing all year during the academic year as we are monitoring, progress monitoring our students. But we're going to be continuing it through the summer to continuously, again, work with our students and their families. And then the last one, which is not new to us, our Jump Start to High School. Again, this is some of our most challenging students that may have had two or more retention and have some, and met some other criterias in regards that are still in middle school. And we're doing an extensive, an extensive summer program with those students to where if they successfully complete this program, they will be promoted to Grade Nine with the cohort. And these students attract all four years of high school. The site in which we're going to be hosting this particular program for these middle school students that are participating in Jump Start is actually going to be at Forest Hill High School. Only one of our high school sites will host this particular program for all the students that are district-wide because it's very important that we have some very strong cadence around the expectation for this particular program. And now, all of our middle school programs, I do need to say, all of our middle school programs are housed on the middle school sites. So all of our middle schools, all of our high schools in the district will be open this summer. They will be hosting their own programs. The elementary is a little different. Elementary, we have thirty-four cluster sites. So those programs will be at the various cluster sites. And then as we go down to high school, our high school is our graduation support program. This is brand-new for us this year. What we've realized, and the board members discussed this morning, that when, through this COVID and in re-engaging our students and realizing that we've had some students that had not connected with us during this COVID slide piece, it was important for us to try to figure out where are our students. It is not okay, knowing that we have some students that have lost, that we have lost. So as we took in an initiative and we had what we called our social workers, we did part-time in system after hours because what we found as we were reaching out to our families during the instructional day, our families, where are they? They're at work. So we wanted to make another effort. So then we went to what we call this twilight. So we had our, some social workers, we put one in each region where they were working four to eight after hours, start knocking, calling, and we were able to make contact with our families, contact with some of our high school students. And in this COVID space and in this pandemic, we found that many of our high schoolers had to work. They had to make a choice, rather coming to school or get a job to help keep a roof over the head of their families and to help put food on the table. And when it became evident to us that we needed to do something as a district in terms of becoming creative and what it is that we need to do to try to help our students and not just say, well, if you don't attend, that you're failing. So that was one initiative. And when we found this out, there are some other pieces that we put in place during the course of this year. But we are continuing during this summer because our seniors, our high school students, they have an opportunity to come in over the summer and work in what we call credit recovery. So they will be coming to make up their credits and so forth to where we can try to get our students graduated prior to the end of Survey Five, which is July twenty-third, and our summer school graduation is on the twenty-second. So these students, we've reached out, we've gone through their data with them. They are actually coming in, they're participating. It's just that their instructional day looks a little different. And they will be a little more intensive over the summer as we are working around their hours. And as we're starting with our seniors, but then as space is opening up for this particular support that we were doing for this year's graduating class, we will then start working with the cohort of Class of 2022 because we're just finding this with all of our high school students, particularly our tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders. And again, we will be, you know, providing transportation, breakfast, lunch to all of these students. And the students that are not participating in any of our summer programs, our summer school sites, you know, all of our schools are going to be open to where they will come in on Thursday and pick up their seven-days' worth of grab-and-go meals and so forth. So, you know, we're just committed in terms of wanting to just be intentional in realizing of the instructional loss and what has happened within these past sixteen months and understanding that this is just the beginning. It's a lot more that we would have to do as a district to try to catch our students up. And that will be Phase Two in terms of this additional support that we're going to have in place in working with all of our schools when we open the doors come August. And right now, what that is looking like is that, again, we were looking at the matrix. We're tearing out our schools and the level of support. And, you know, we talk about the level of support. Sometimes it's not just resources because resources does not teach children. It's about that instructional pedagogy and what we're going to do in terms of really drilling down to make certain that the instructional pedagogy and what we're putting in to our students is going to make a difference at the end of all of this. So this is just a very quick overview in regards to the work that we're doing this summer. And I have to say, I'm with our ESY, which is our ESE students and our ELL students. And we are also going to be providing some, some work, some support for those students as well. They're going to have our ESY summer programs, our ELL, and also our migrant programs at all of our cluster sites. So we're going to be open this summer. It's going to look like a, like a regular school year. But we are in this for the long haul and committed to doing whatever it is to get through this space. But thank you.
Will you have the school buses running so the kids will have the normal means of transportation?
Yes, all students participating in the summer programs will have transportation. And then those students that are participating in our summer programs that may need to be transitioned to a summer camp and so forth, we will, we've also, we are working to where we will have those students transported there as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to start wrapping up and discuss a bit about the strategic plan. So I think you know what a strategic plan is. It's our North Star. We had a five-year strategic plan, as mentioned, where we fell short. We only met the goals regarding the graduation rates. And so the ones that where we fell short included third-grade reading, high school readiness, and the postgraduate success. So we're embarking upon a plan to, to basically regroup and refocus. And, you know, the strategic plan will essentially be the superintendent's implementation plan, right? So as mentioned, we share the understanding of equity. We refreshed the district's mission and vision statement. And now we are working on getting input in our strategic planning so, so we can make sure that our goals are the goals that best serve the needs of our students and present them with a bright future. You'll see our little matrix here. We are now reviewing those goals. We have the Steering Committee, which was mentioned earlier. We're about to embark upon focused groups that we hope to have include, like, six thousand people, which is like a humongous task. I'm not sure how we're going to do it, but it's no point dreaming little dreams, right? So that's what we're going to work on. And then you see that we intend to approve the goals and associated measures by the end of July.
Okay, this is it. I'm telling you, we made it to the end. So when, I know this is a long one, and I really appreciate y'all sticking with us through this. I wanted to come at the very end and just have at least a couple of thoughts to kind of close this out and like where we go from here and what the City of West Palm Beach can do to help us. So I want to mention the property near Forest Hill Boulevard. If you all can imagine that school in your head, across the street, there's an empty lot. We actually own that empty lot. And now that you're changing the location of the entrance to the golf course, I think what we could do is maybe do something around that area to still expand into the property that we own. So please keep that in mind as we're going forward. We are, Forest Hill High School is the most overcrowded school we have in the district. It is absolutely huge. It's a wonderful thing because it means that people really love that school. They want to send their children there. It's definitely a place I'm considering for my daughter. So I, we really need to build a little bit more space. So we have some dollars in to build extra buildings there, and we appreciate the parking lot expansion. But as you're going forward with your plans on the golf course, please keep this in mind that the school is sort of busting at the seams. And we need to, we need to think as a school district how we're going to open that up. So that's something I've been really passionate about. Maybe consider having some sort of a tie-in to the school with the Golf Academy. I think this is such an exciting time for the City of West Palm Beach. I'm so proud of you all for getting this done. You know, I live in that neighborhood, so it means a lot to me and my neighbors. I saw you had, the neighbor across the street from me came and spoke at your last meeting, got quoted in the paper. I hear from him probably every day about what's going on with the golf course. He loves to talk about it, so I've been kept very up to date on it. But I think that maybe we consider a golf academy, something like that. I know you have an education committee in the City of West Palm Beach. I believe in these so much. I think having residents that come in and listen to the concerns of their fellow residents and bring that to you, so you have that really good conduit. I would say also, if you can, attend SAC meetings. I think that's something that you can do that really shows your commitment to a school. Pick a school or a couple of schools in your area that you want to understand what's going on. The SAC meetings are generally kept to an hour, and you can understand what's going on at that school and really have that connection because we need you. We desperately need you. I don't think a great education system happens without our municipal leaders. And then I'm going to go ahead and pass it off to Alex, or, sorry, excuse me, Ms. Ayala. I have got to get that right. Ms. Ayala, please come up and finish this out with us.
Yes, last slide, promise. I really just wanted to take a moment to thank and commend the mayor for his commitment to racial and ethnic equality and creating the task force and thank him for selecting me to be part of moving that work forward. I have learned so much about myself and about the work and about people around me just as serving as a co-chair on the Education and Workforce Development Subcommittee that I think it's aligning perfectly with the work we're doing at the school district and how that kind of all aligns and how we have to be together on the same page to make sure that this is successful. So I wanted to make sure that, oh, I don't see the slide. Adam, was it on? There's supposed to be a slide that talks about the upcoming Action Summit, which I wanted to promote and talk about. That's on June twelfth, it's Saturday, from ten to twelve, ten AM to twelve in the afternoon. And we're going to have the opportunity to hear for the second time, I'm sorry.
Till two o'clock, isn't it? Tonight?
Two PM, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Tiffany. One of our amazing staff facilitators and the lead of this program on the city staff. Ten AM to two PM, I'm sorry. And you can register for that at WPEqualityTaskForce.com/2021. There's like an Eventbrite link. What's that one? Okay, WPB Equality Task Force dot org. You can register for the event there. We had one before when we initiated on this work. And I'm really just hoping that we get enough community input to guide where we should go, what we want to do, and what you want to see out of your city and out of your school system for a more equitable system for every single child and every single resident. So I wanted to make sure I talked about that and that I thanked the mayor and the commission for holding firm on this work and knowing that this is the direction we need to be going. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
So now it's time for you guys to question us. Anything that you have for us, we have staff members, we have three board members that represent you. I'm happy to answer anything that I can or with my colleagues. Please share with us any thoughts or concerns that you have.
Mr. President, see your hand up.
Thank you. And thank you for the very informative presentation for all that you do for our children. I do want to commend you and commend your principles for the partner- for the partnerships that they've formed with area organizations, including one that I'm a member of, the West Palm Beach Rotary Club. Um I think those partnerships are essential um to, you know, to educating our children and assisting in the process. Um one question that I had is about the school grading and how the schools are graded. And what can we do or what are we doing to address some of those grades, especially those schools in our city that have achieved a C grade or lower?
So first thing, I would like Dr. Sheffield to come up because she's much better at this than I am. But I would like to address the grade. Um we didn't get a grade last year for our schools. So we're basically just holding our grades from a couple of years ago and they're holding right now. Um so we anticipate this year coming up, some of the schools will get new grades. But let me go ahead and let Dr. Sheffield address that because you're way better.
Okay, well, yes. Um and looking at the school accountability, um school accountability grades, which, you know, myself personally, do I like them because it pins one against, you know, the other, right? Um but most importantly, what we have to, of course, look at is look in regards to see um what is actually happening in regards to those areas in which our students are being graded on. And as Dr. Robinson, I'm shared, many, all of our board members shared the, where our students were um at the beginning of the presentation, a lot of it around our literacy and math. And I have to say to you, and that is a goal, one of the goals that we did not meet around third grade, right? So I'm looking forward to, for this upcoming year, which I think um we as a county can look to see great things in the years to come. Um definitely, it's going to take time for us to see the fruit of our labor. This is an opportune because we have a new textbook adoption that's, that's starting um that we've already completed, I should say. So we have a new core that we are going for literacy within our district, starting with K-two, that we're going to be implementing in the fall. And I think in understanding that this is an opportune time to really reset the work around literacy and the foundational skills. Um and, and realizing that when we get our students to grade three, three, that's not where the teaching and learning starts. It actually starts even before they get to pre-K. You know, we always say learning starts where? At home, right? For the intended purpose of this conversation as the district, I think in terms of having an opportunity to really reset balanced literacy and our vision um and holding tight many of these pieces and pulling back in some of the autonomies and so forth, we will start to see things shape a little differently. But it's all around the academics. And as I talk around the academic, student academic support plan, you heard me say that phase one is around the work that we were, that we did in the spring that I did not talk about. But most importantly, the work that we are doing this summer to try to mitigate some of the instructional losses. But most importantly, phase two, which is going to be around a three-year span and also tie into the new strategic plan. And so we are being very intentional and again deliberate around what does that support looks like in the work that we're doing within this three-year student academic support plan. It should be around um understanding and the instructional pedagogy and making certain that we are putting in support structures for our infrastructure, for our teachers, to provide that support. So where after this three-year period is over and we're pulling some of those pieces out, the foundation can remain standing. Um because we, the teachers are awesome, but they are not going to be able to do this lift alone. So, you know, we're doing our very best.
Give a follow-up to that, Mr. President.
Yeah, thank you briefly. Um I saw on one of the slides that um you indicated the number of, of students attending school in class versus at home. Um but that's virtual, tied to a specific school. Do you have any numbers or you keep track of those students that are participating in the Florida Virtual Program? Or those students who, who are participating in traditional homeschool? Does the district keep uh track of those numbers?
Yes, we do keep track of the numbers. Um and do I have those numbers right off the top? No, I do not. But we do track the number of students that are in Florida Virtual. And that's important to us because we also have Palm Beach Virtual, right? So what we have found and what we know is that we have made the announcement with that all students, we will be returning to brick and mortar in the fall. But it would be crazy for us not to think that as a district that there may be some families that may not be comfortable in having their son or daughter to return to brick and mortar in the fall. I understand that. And it's our job to, in terms of trying to really um think outside the box and be creative in regards to what can we do for our families that are still a little apprehensive. So what we have done is that we are really looking in regards to our Palm Beach Virtual, the students, because we have seen an increase in Palm Beach Virtual, the students that are in Palm Beach Virtual that are, I should say, the students that are in Florida Virtual, why are they registering in Florida Virtual and not over into our franchise of Palm Beach Virtual? So we have identified many of the courses that we'll be adding over to our Palm Beach Virtual that will bring our, that will bring some of those students back from Florida Virtual. Also, what we've done with, what we're doing with Palm Beach Virtual is making certain that we are being inclusive for all students. And what I mean by that is that making certain that as we are leveraging our Palm Beach Virtual and being inclusive, making certain that we are adding those support infrastructure for our students, um that may be E S E and our E L L students. But understanding that our E S E and our E L L students, that their individual educational plan really and truly drive the instructional methodology. Meaning that is, will Palm Beach Virtual be the right fit for that student in terms of the instruction that they will be receiving? You know, just last week, I think it was W P T V had asked, you know, well, what is the difference with Palm Beach Virtual, with Florida Virtual, then distance learning? What is the difference with all of this? Well, distance learning, what we know now, that synchronous learning, teacher-led instruction. Palm Beach Virtual, what have you, is asynchronous. Meaning that it's for those students that really and truly, that can hold tight and lead their learning because it's not much teacher guidance there. Teacher is there to provide that support when there may be a question and certain, and most so importantly, serve as a facilitator.
Commissioner Fox, and we'll go to Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. Thank you to all of you so much for this very insightful presentation. It is overwhelming um the data and you have done such an incredible job the last year. I know how tough it's been. I've watched some of your meetings. I um just thank you for all you're doing. My question um regard, is regarding technology. It, I'm, it's fantastic to hear that you are um going to have so many new media centers and putting electronic devices in everyone's hands. I think that's incredible. You, we can't get through our day without knowing how to use technology, having technology. But I also think back in my day, you know, we had things like Shop Class and Homeec. And so I'm wondering, you know, some of the slides that were um showing the great choice programs that have so much, there's so many different things to learn, and that's fantastic. But I also know that college might not be for everyone. And people that I know who own air-conditioning companies can't find enough people to work there and they're making a hundred thousand dollars a year. So it's not always the most glamorous work, but it is very well-paid. You know, your, your friends might coming, be coming out of college with a hundred thousand dollars in debt and you're making a hundred thousand dollars in the first few years you're working. So I was just curious if there is still a place in our school system for learning skills and workforce development that is more skills-based.
Thank you. I think Dr. Robinson is the perfect person to talk about this. She's been working really hard on this. Are you okay with it? Yeah, I think she would be wonderful. Also, I want to recognize Dr. Adam Miller, who actually, until this job, did all of our technology implementations. So we have to thank him for all his work on that.
So the answer to your question is yes. Um we do have, some of those choice programs would qualify as a new age vocational programming in, in the language that I would use. We have, actually have some outstanding plans in the works that is too soon to really put it public. But it will be um, it will be fantastic and provide the kind of opportunities that you're talking about. Um I personally have been working for a while and will continue to fight to make sure that young people that have gone, gone off the, the right path um and end up in our, our alternative schools have access to such programming. So when they come out of school, that they can feed their families in a legal way. Uh but yeah, we, we realize the um, what I would call the errors of previous school boards and that um our, our relationship with Palm Beach State has changed. And so there's room for more development of such programs. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you all so much for this presentation. Um I know it's been a long time in the works. We had a date set before COVID hit. And um it's, it's, it was just really great to see all the information that you presented. And um I'm really excited to hear the academic focus that you all are taking and that that's helping to meet and achieve and, and hopefully surpass your strategic plan goals. And, you know, part of the reason for having this presentation today was to see what could we do to be a good partner to you all in those efforts? And so mayor, I heard, you know, some things related to roads, crosswalks, signage, landscaping, internships that we already provide, and increased library access, which all seemed reasonable within our scope. And I just asked that if possible, if staff could look into some of those specific requests, if, if those are feasible for us to accomplish.
We will take those under, the requests under advisement.
Thank you.
City administrator was making a very detailed list. I thought she was. So we will take that under advisement.
Thank you, mayor. Um you know, and Commissioner Peduzzi mentioned the school grades. And I know that's all often a touchy subject because that school grade doesn't tell the whole story of these schools. I saw, I think, each of us taking a photo of the choice programs that are offered because that's amazing and that's something that probably doesn't get advertised as much or talked about as much. And um, you know, I, I just want, I, I'm sure you all know this and, and we see this every day in the work that we're doing is people who are moving to West Palm Beach or who are growing a young family in West Palm Beach will literally pull up an app and say, but, but the school here is a C or a D. And, and we know that they're good schools. And so, you know, I, I really just wanted to have this conversation so that we could continue to be collaborative and, you know, give us information that we can help put the word out about those schools that, you know, there's, there's other things that make a good school. Um although I, I do know that that grade is something that a lot of people look at. My question relates to the enrollment numbers that you showed. It was really interesting. Of, of course, I get it, the alternative schools might have different enrollment numbers. But many of the schools or some of the schools that you showed us were under enrollment. And then you mentioned Forest Hill High School is over enrollment. Can you talk a little bit about that case? Is that just because of COVID this year or is that typical?
There, so there's definitely an impact of COVID. We have had some students that are enrolled in, as Commissioner Peduzzi mentioned, um some of the, the virtual options. We have the Palm Beach Virtual and the, the Florida Virtual. So that's part of it. Um but really, schools, I, I feel like they're, they kind of trend. You know, some people want their kids to go to this school right now and then it sort of changes. And then, you know, there's one that's more popular than the other. Um so the enrollment can be based on just parent choice. They're really interested and want their children to go there. And some people will choose to live in an area just to go there. We're actually building a bunch of new schools right now um in Boca and uh the western part of the communities because um there's so many people that would like to go to our schools there. Um but then we'll have other schools up here where, where we have less. So what we could do is we could rearrange all the boundaries so that we could make sure that more children come to the, the more northern schools or the more urban schools. But you know what a nightmare that would be um to move all the boundaries. So we try really hard not to move boundaries. We did just have one recently for Forest Hill High School, a couple of years back, shifting some students to Palm Beach Lakes to sort of relieve that. Um but it takes a few years for that to take, uh for that impact to happen. So um that would be my best answer on, on enrollment. I'd turn to staff, see if they have any other, anything else you want to add to that? No, okay. But we can talk, and honestly, if you have families who are interested in moving to the area and they're hesitant about the schools, share those, those names with us. Because I have talked to many families. I don't think I've ever sent my daughter to an A school. It doesn't really mean anything to me. It, it matters on what's happening at their school. Um her education at Coniston and at North Grade has been above my expectations. She's done so well. Um and I just really appreciate the teachers that are there. So I think um it's more than just the school grade. And I actually really don't like the grades. Actually, didn't mention them on mine. Um I'm thrilled that, that Dreyfus is such a wonderful school and I'm glad we have it in the community. But it's not the only school to send your children to. We have a lot of really wonderful, wonderful places that, that would take great care of all the children. So if, if anybody's interested in moving here, have them call us. We'll get them in touch with staff. We can get them to talk to principals and staff at the schools so that they can feel comfortable about sending their children there.
Thank you.
Follow-up.
Thank you, mayor. Um just wanted to point out, um I, I think we are still in negotiations and discussing the property at Forest Hill High School. So we appreciate your gratitude, but I know that that is still in discussion, has not come before the commission yet. As well as some programming with the golf course is in discussion to support our schools and especially Forest Hill since it's right there. Um so we're grateful that you're keeping an eye on that. Um and my last comment, mayor, is, is just a, a request that um I believe that the Education Advisory Committee is the only committee that does not have a dedicated staff person. And, you know, given some of their requests related to internships, increased library access, just that maybe there's a staff person who already does some work that could be supportive to the Education Advisory Committee. I know that they have um a change recently in leadership and the committee has been working very hard on their strategic plan. Um and I know that they'll be presenting that to you. But just to keep that in mind, that they would like to have some additional support as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that request. Not the first time I've heard it. Okay, uh thank you all very much for a very detailed presentation. We appreciate the time. Thank you, Commissioner Lambert, for taking the lead on getting this scheduled. Uh this information is very helpful and we will continue to look for ways in which uh we can be collaborative as we try to educate our young people in our city.
Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you.